We are gonna call the May fourteenth, twenty twenty four special board meeting to order. It is nine A M. As always, that clock is one minute fast. Um, can I get the pledge from Supervisor Satello, please? Thank you so much. Can I get a motion for the acknowledgement certificate of posting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, that passes by the. Um, we're gonna go to regular agenda. Um, item number one A is gonna be presented by, I believe, the tax collector, Melinda. Good morning, Melinda.
Okay. Good morning. Um, so at our last budget meeting, um, there was discussion regarding our, our business property program. And so I asked each, I'm sorry.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna interrupt. I apologize. I missed something. And I told Ray that I was going to do it and I missed it. And I'm, I'm really sorry. So I'm gonna backtrack, so hold that thought for just one moment. I'm gonna turn this over to the C A O, but before I turn it over to C A O, I even forgot something for myself. I am pulling item, it was a fun weekend, let's just say that. Um, I'm pulling item two point A from closed session. I'm going to push that out, um, because after reviewing this agenda with the C A O, I think it's packed enough. We don't need to add anything else to it, so in lieu of time, so, uh, Ray, why don't you, you had, uh, and I'm sorry. Was there, we didn't have any board comments on.
No, no.
Right, okay, making sure I didn't miss that one, too.
We're good.
Confessing all my sins right now.
All right, well, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. First of all, I thank you for making time out today in the special meeting, as well as, um, the public and department heads. Really appreciate you being available today, uh, for this meeting. I really wanna give a special thanks, um, to staff, to Cheyenne, uh, to administration, H R, um, the respective departments. Financial, uh, individuals that have helped build the budget, have been able to help us through this process. At our last board meeting, your board, uh, requested, uh, quite a few things to be discussed today. Um, so really, we, we did a real special effort to, um, really, in essence, get the budget more or less done. Um, a month in advance than we normally do. So it's, it's available for you online. You're able to today actually, um, access the stories. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but your board did request us to, um, bring to you an H D L report. So thank you, Melinda, for spearheading that, as well as H D L coming on board today, so we're gonna highlight that today. We also, um, uh, the board had requested looking at different types of revenues. So i- in this presentation, it dovetails some, some, um, revenue things that we actually went after over the years, as well as dovetailing the sales tax, which we'll have at our next agenda item. Uh, to share with your board kind of what that would look like potentially, if, if the board wanted to, um, move forward with that. Additionally, I wanna thank Joe Paul Gonzalez. Um, he did a lot of work as well in O P E D. As well as, um, being able to develop, um, a response to, um, how we're doing with T O T and et cetera. So, uh, with that, I, I just wanted to share with you, it's a very busy day, uh, we have a lot going on, so. Uh, but again, this is a time to have dialogue, to be able to just ask, you know, questions. Please feel free, uh, we're, we're all here to answer those questions and, uh, basically move forward. So, um, with that, I just wanted to, to share those, those thoughts as opening remarks, so I'll pass it to Melinda.
Okay.
Thank you, C A O. Um, so again, um, it's our last budget meeting, as Ray said. Um, we had discussion regarding, um, our business property, uh, license. Um, I'm sorry, our business license program. And so I asked H D L if they would come here and share with us, um, what they do on our program. Um, and answer any questions that you may have. As you know, we, um, work with H D L on our business property, they help manage, uh, I'm sorry, business program. And they help, business license program, and they help manage that program. Um, but as Ray said, um, before their presentation, I thought we would review a couple of, um, what I, what I feel are important part. So anyways, have a little agenda of what we're gonna talk about this morning. Um, so, um, over the, um, the year, the past couple of years. Um, your board and previous boards have asked us, administration in particular, to review various revenues that the county receives. Um, and some of those revenues that we've looked at are, um, T O T. So we, in, um, January of twenty nineteen, we raised the T O T rate from eight percent to twelve percent. Um, and then Joe Paul is gonna have a presentation on, um, going to a little more detail on T O T, uh, later today. And then in twenty eighteen, we went before the voters and asked them if we wanted to have a business license in, um, San Benito County. And so we implemented that in July of twenty nineteen. Um, and then that's where H D L comes in to help with our, um, program. And we also looked at sales tax, um, increasing the sales tax in unincorporated areas of San Benito County. Your board, previous boards have continually said no. And then we also have a presentation on, um, sales tax later, um, in our agenda. And then we also looked at grants. We asked the departments if we would, um, see what we could do as far as getting grants. And so, um, many departments have been able to get grants, um, and other funding also. We hired a lobbyist. We also reached out to, uh, Senator Robert Rivas, um, Delacron, and John Laird. Um, and see what they could do and assist us in getting more revenue. And then we've looked at fees for services. We've updated our fees, um, for services. And then we've also looked at impact fees. We've updated those several times. And we've added the I T impact fee and the library impact fee also. A little bit about measure H, which is the business license program. There's two components to it. One is the license requirement for businesses operating in the unincorporated areas of San Benito County. Hollister and San Juan Batista have their own programs. Um, and so in the unincorporated area, we have areas like Chos Pinos, Canoche, Pisinas. Um, that have little businesses, um, that we, um, have gotten business license for them also. And then the largest area is in, the unincorporated area is obviously, uh, we have a lot of cattle and farming. Um, and a lot of those, the current measure H has extended from the business license. And then the second component to that is we have a ten cents mining depletion charge for places located in San Benito County. So mo- most of the board's concerns have been the amount of revenue that we see, we see under the business license program. And what are the consequences for non-compliance? So as you know, we reached out to H D L and asked them to help us with our business license program. And so why did we choose H D L? Number one, they come highly recommended to us. Um, they are experts in sales tax analysis. We have a longstanding relationship with H D L. Um, in working with the county to determine, make sure that we're getting all this sales tax. Uh, from vendors that we should be getting. Um, they have many, uh, business license clients. That allows my office, the tax collector's office, and also the treasurer's office, uh, to focus one on property taxes. A large, we have a very large percentage of general fund revenue that comes from property taxes. And then on the treasurer's side, uh, we manage a portfolio of roughly four hundred million dollars, a staff of six. Um, and so then I'd like to turn it over to H D L. Um, Ian Davis is here from H D L. He's our compliance manager. And also, um, Matt Morales is here also to have a presentation on what they do for us. And to answer any questions that you may have.
Hello, I'm Ian Davis, um, as she mentioned, and, uh, I am the compliance manager for H D L Companies, um, as well as the, uh, County of San Benito. And for, as far as business license tax is concerned, so we're gonna give just a brief presentation on kinda how the business license tax program has been going for the county. Um, with some just revenue information, some general business statistics, and kind of I'll briefly go over some of the processes and things of that nature that kinda come along with this program. Um, first things first, some background, uh, Melinda touched on it a little bit, but, um, San Benito County originally adopted a business license tax, um, in twenty eighteen. And initially started enforcing it in twenty nineteen. The purpose of this tax was to gain revenue for, you know, law enforcement, fire services, road maintenance, other local government services. Um, important piece that was touched on, but I'll just wanna make sure to reiterate, is that the only tax, the tax can only really be levied on businesses within the unincorporated area of the county. Um, obviously, this limits the total taxable businesses that are in this category throughout the, throughout the county. Um, especially since, again, some of these particular types of businesses, like the agricultural entities and, um, other different types of already exempt businesses are already exempt. Um, most of the business license taxes that you guys do have at the moment, um, other than the mining companies, are based on an employee-based tax rate. So, um, basically, the more employees that you have, the higher the business tax that you're gonna end up paying. Um, with mining companies, on the other hand, it's based on the actual minerals that are being depleted from the area. So just wanted to, I guess, give a just quick little background on what the business tax really looks like. Um, to give you guys a snapshot of what the business community looks like. It's about, what we have right now is about six hundred and ninety total active businesses that are registered with the county. Um, this is, I would say, this is after a couple years of strict, I would say, enforcement and non-compliance, like, uh, actions that H D L and the county have taken. Um, we've sent out letters. We've had people out in the field, like, looking for particular businesses. We've downloaded data off of Yelp. Um, we've taken unincorporated sales tax revenue and tried to figure out where the sales tax is basically coming from. We've taken a bunch of different types of avenues in order to identify, uh, businesses that are potentially non-compliant with your business license tax. Um, that drove the number from what was obviously zero back in twenty eighteen, because there was no registrations, to now, at this point, we're reflecting about seven hundred businesses that are currently active. This mixed in with now that there's this, um, active program and active website that H D L has, uh, doing your administration on a day-to-day basis. Um, people are, as you can see, in the new business category, you have businesses that kind of come in, obviously, on the normal, just either because they're moving in, um, from being a new business. Or maybe they're an outside contractor coming in to do a job, whatever the case may be. Um, and then you have a low amount of closed businesses, so businesses are not necessarily leaving the county area. Um, you have more businesses entering than you do closing. And this is probably no small part, just like the inflation of these numbers are more than likely because of the mixture of the compliance program. Um, so the more businesses that we're finding, obviously, the more businesses are getting added to the program. Um, end of the day, this is looking like it's a, it's trending in a healthy direction. You're not having businesses leave in droves like there are in some other cities and counties throughout the, the state of California. So just wanted to just give that as a little snapshot. Um, an idea of what our call center looks like, um, we have a ninety-five percent S L A when it comes to answering phone calls in under one minute. Um, so anybody that does actually try to call in to the county's business license tax, um, will get an answer immediately. We'll try to help them and make sure that we walk them through the business license tax process. Um, emails are also at a ninety percent of under twenty-four hours being responded to. Um, again, our main focus is to make sure that no one's, like, waiting days or weeks to get a response. People don't have to wait any particular point in time to just get a simple business license tax. This is a very quick, easy process over the phone that they can handle and/or online and/or, um, sending in a check by post mail or something along those lines, whatever way fancies the particular person trying to, um, apply for the business tax certificate. So, again, all this being said, um, currently, right now, because of just the way that, when it, I think the program first started, there was a huge push to try to get everyone registered. Now that we're in this kind of maintenance mode, trying to make sure that we're kinda getting the last bits of people into compliance. Um, we are starting to see a more stable environment when it comes to the business license tax collection process, as well as the just call center aspect and everything else. Um, brief picture of what the revenue trend has looked like over the last few years. So something I wanna, I wanna key in on as part of a particular cause of concern that Melinda and I have actually recently talked about. Is that we wanna increase our focus on potentially auditing one of the bigger categories, which is the, the mining operations. Um, the way that the county passed this business license tax program a few years ago heavily is reliant on that particular category. Um, it, basically, if that revenue goes down, for whatever reason, let's say that their, their production slows down, or let's say that there's even, not saying that there is, but there's for some reason some bad reporting that's going on, they're misreporting some of their amounts. Um, the county's gonna see a direct hit to the business license tax. Um, the general business community, um, as far as every other business outside of the mining operation, um, are paying very low taxes, because the employee-based tax is only a couple bucks per employee. It's not something that really, um, is gonna be generating a lot of revenue. So there's gonna be a concerted effort on H D L's part in working with the county staff to make sure that we obviously handle this in a professional way. We handle it in the most, like, business-friendly type of way. Uh, but we are going to be looking in to make sure that we're protecting your guys' revenue sources and protecting, uh, the county's, uh, revenue moving forward. Um, last thing, I know that business tax non-compliance is an important subject for the county. Um, one of the things that we just wanted to add on top of this is just some information about what happens if a business does not pay. Um, they can be assessed up to a maximum penalty of twenty percent per year of tax that they owe. So let's say a business has been operating since twenty nineteen, they'll owe the back taxes for that, along with the twenty percent penalty. There's also an interest rate of about one and a half percent per month of delinquency. That does not cap out. That continues in perpetuity until the tax payment has been paid off. Um, obviously, H D L and San Benito County are urging all businesses in the community to pay as quickly as possible so that they avoid these fees. Um, and we're consistently doing, like I said, monitoring programs and downloading data from websites and doing field scraping and doing a bunch of different things to try to ensure that everyone's paying as fast as possible. A lot of those people are paying, I would say, at the moment. Um, there's somewhere in the range of probably about an eighty percent compliance rate from the last statistics that we pulled. Um, that does mean, obviously, there is cause for concern from the fifteen to twenty percent of businesses that are still not paying. But those are consistently being monitored, consistently being contacted, and consistently trying to, um, make sure those businesses are getting into compliance. Um, other than that, we will be consistently sending notices. There's other things that this county can do in order to enforce these taxes. Um, H D L usually recommends doing some sort of escalation procedure, so, um, starting with, like I said, letters, doing some phone calls, maybe sending out like a more aggressive letter, threatening certain things, depending on the type of, like, you know, the penalties and the interest and everything else. Um, and then things can be discussed further on, depending on how aggressive the county wants to get. But that's really the, I guess, the plan. It's, it's been working. We've obviously, again, started from zero and we're getting up to the, as close to the hundred percent number as we possibly are gonna get. Um, but yeah, that is the end of the presentation.
Okay, um, let's open it up to public comment. In chambers, if you have a public comment, please bring the speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. I see no comments. Okay, bringing it back to the board, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Cuzmeti.
My favorite topic, business license taxes. Um, so thank you for being here. Uh, I do have several questions. Um, a couple statements. First of all, the increase in businesses, I'm guessing, considering the times we're in, that then they have something to do with more people working from home. Um, just, just gonna throw that out there. I don't think it's necessarily amounting, or amounting to a boom in our economy. Um, it's probably very small revenue increases because of that. Um, I would also say, um, as far as the auditing of mining businesses, I fully support that. Uh, I'd like to know more about what that would entail. Um, and would also like to know what other counties do to ensure that we're getting our fair share. I saw that jump, um, on the graphic from twenty-one to twenty-two. That was pretty alarming. Um, because most of our, uh, mining revenue, I'm gonna go ahead and guess, comes from one company. And so, uh, I'm just wondering what happened there and if something wasn't being collected previously, if we can go back and look at that. If it's not too late to, uh, see if, if we weren't getting our fair share of the tax revenue. I don't know if you can comment on that. I'll, I'll just stop there.
Yeah, I can't necessarily comment on the particular type of business or a particular business on what their recordings are gonna be. But I can say that part of the auditing program and part of, like, the significant impact of that and what more counties would wanna do, I would say, especially when you have such a focused revenue source. Um, again, you have, you do have a general business license tax that does impact every business in one way or another. But obviously, that business license tax very heavily relies on one particular business type, right? Um, when you have something like that, it's important to do constant monitoring, because even if the business is not, let's say, it's easy to assume that someone's making, like, you know, when you see that huge rise and then a huge fall, it's easy to make an assumption that there's a potential, you know, actual nefarious misallocation of revenue or something along those lines. Um, but the fact of the matter is, people make mistakes all the time. There's, like, people who, uh, just misfile or don't understand what the filing is supposed to be, or whatever the case may be. And so it's important that I think that we create a program that is consistently monitoring this and consistently set up a relationship with these, um, big companies and these big mining companies to ensure that their correct filings are being reported to the county. Um, that's all that I think, I think the important thing is, like I said, establishing that relationship with each of those businesses and understanding the cadence of those recordings, understanding what to look for and all those different things, and getting that information from those businesses. And basically diving into their records to make sure that everything is up to.
Can we get data that goes back beyond twenty, was it twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, as far back for the mining in particular? Because all I saw was the one forty-something to three hundred something.
So that, well, so to be clear on that particular jump, right? That was because I believe the new tax was being implemented. I don't have, it could be that, it, this is the other thing to think about when it comes to that is revenues. Revenues can be reflected in a particular period, right? But that doesn't mean that it was like, uh, that actual period is being paid for. So let's say, for an example, um, you have fiscal year twenty nineteen that shows the hundred and forty-seven thousand, the number that you're talking about. And then the following year, it has this big jump to four hundred thousand. If a business was paying for two tax periods within the twenty-twenty fiscal period, then that would obviously flood that particular period. So we can show details on that, but I'm assuming that's where the big jump comes from particularly. It's not like the business was reporting zero in that.
I just don't wanna make too many assumptions.
Yes.
Um, and I'm, I'm just. Um, and I'm, I'm just kinda wondering as far as, uh, is this just a self-reporting?
It is a self-reported tax, so there is, like, you do have to accept the initial return and then you must audit after.
Any way around that to?
Unfortunately, no, business license tax.
Um, Granite Rock's a public company, I believe.
Yeah, I mean.
Do they have to report this on their, um, and I apologize, I didn't research this beforehand, but would they have to report the tonnage and all that on their, is that something we could go back and look at if they have stock reports or?
If they have something like that and it's public, you can look at it and you can make an assessment based on like information that the county believes is, you know, obviously true and backup of like, you can back up that information. Um, again, I think auditing is a more efficient way to do it and it allows for like back and forth dialogue with the business.
I just wanna make sure we're going back and, you know, not, I'm not making any accusations here, I just wanna make, because I don't, I think there are numerous flaws in this system. I've said that in the past, I'll, I'll get into more of them that I think there are. Um, I'm wondering, you mentioned Yelp, that seems a little informal to me. I appreciate it, um, trying all avenues, but can, can we go through the IRS? Are there other higher entities that are more official than looking online and sort of guessing?
So, the IRS doesn't necessarily share information like that, that's not something that you can usually obtain. Um, we do obtain information from, like I said, I mentioned.
About the state?
Sorry, was it?
The state.
Yes, so we do have Secretary of State information. I was just mentioning a bunch of different avenues, so we typically separate things into two separate categories. We separate one into governmental statistics and then private statistics. So governmental statistics would be things like your local, um, fictitious, fictitious business name statements, your unsecured property tax filings, your secured property tax filings. You have, um, the Secretary of State filings, the sales tax filings. You have a bunch of different methods that we can basically identify different business activities through from governmental sources. And then on another end, we have the private data sources that we purchase in order to scrape the internet for. So we work on both of these things and fuel both of them by matching them against the current business license file and trying to identify as much business activity as possible. So the answer to your question is yes, there's multiple different avenues that we can approach and multiple different ways that we can do this. Um, and we try to find all the data that we possibly can to try to identify as many businesses as we possibly can.
I don't know how to ask this, but you know, you said eighty percent, it seems like a ballpark and that's not a knock on you guys. It seems like you're trying to do everything you can. Um, how, I mean, what's, is there a range there? I, I, I just don't know if I'm necessarily buying eighty percent compliance just considering the past. And also I didn't see a number in particular, maybe I missed it, for just the business license tax revenue and the, um, increase or decrease. I, I saw, um, I don't know if you still have that chart, but I saw the mining jump, but I don't know if I necessarily, I see that that one year it jumped by fifteen thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And, and again, I would hope that we could maybe go back and look at some of the prior data that goes back to twenty nineteen to get a better handle on, if maybe that can just be provided even privately, not privately, everything that we do is public, I might email or whatever to all of us, so that we get a better handle of these trends, just because my recollection of the past is that it's kinda been all over the board and we haven't had a lot of assurance that, um, that we're necessarily. The biggest thing here is that we don't have a way of holding these folks accountable. I know you said we go, we, we threaten to charge them twenty percent, but if they're not paying it, what, what does it matter? If they're not voluntarily coming forward and saying, you know, I haven't paid it in five years, here's your, here's your bag of cash, which is a small bag by the way, but, um, how, is that, am I wrong on that assessment still? And, and is there a way to, to really hold them accountable? And I'm not, I'm pro-business, I don't, this just, it's a, it's a tax you have to pay. I don't understand that we still have, I remember when we went through the COVID, uh, we were giving out a bunch of money to restaurants and they were, some of them were refusing to pay this. We're, we're sitting here offering them thousands and thousands of dollars and they, and they, by principle, were putting their foot down and not wanting to pay a several hundred dollar business license fee. So, so we know that there are businesses in this community that are aware that they don't really have to pay it. And there is no accountability in essence.
Yeah.
And can we find a pathway though to accountability, real accountability?
So the answer to that is yes. So there are other, like I mentioned, there are other enforcement methods that you can take within the, so this is a tax, right? So not paying a local business tax can be charged with a misdemeanor if the county decides to like go up to that level. Um, it's just gonna depend on, and I hate to put in this type of, this type of light, but it's gonna depend on, so for an example, like I mentioned, most of them, I would say, I'm almost, I'm pretty sure me and Melinda both checked, I believe all of the mining companies are registered at this point. Um, when we're talking about an eighty percent compliance rate and there's twenty percent of these businesses left over, it's majoritively, if not all, businesses that are like of like, you know, some sort of retail aspect or some sort of other miscellaneous type of business act, um, activity. Um, pursuing a business who owes probably in most cases, um, a hundred and fifty dollars and pursuing them for some sort of misdemeanor charge, um, obviously it's gonna be really costly for the county. Um, and obviously on principle, all these things are, these are activities that the county should take. Obviously if a business is breaking the law, we should pursue it and we should make sure that we're following up to, up to the, I guess, to the letter of the law. But, um, it's just gonna depend on what that enforcement strategy looks like. And like I said, trying to, in lack of a better term, trying to mo, like motivate people in different ways, like by threatening penalties, by threatening things at first to limit the amount of expenditures that the county ends up having to take on as far as like legal costs and other things that you end up having to take on during those, um, those times. Um.
I'm not suggesting that we go after people criminally, I think that's excessive personally, but.
Obviously, so, but I'm saying there are different enforcement methods that you can take, right? And in those enforcement methods, they're available. However, it's just how far does the county wanna push it? And at the moment, you're right to say that there's not a lot of accountability on some of those businesses who are just, like you said, are standing on principle and not wanting to pay the hundred and fifty dollar business tax, but.
And how many like letters do you send out and is it?
Yeah, so to each business, we send a total of normally somewhere in the range of four to five notices if they haven't paid. So obviously more often than not, like I said, with the eighty percent category, um, you're right to say it's a ballpark, I could get the official. So to answer the kind of question that seems to be a growing theme through some of the questions that you're asking, it's like whether or not we can share some of this data. We can share all the data, it's no problem at all, I'll make sure to get all of it over to Melinda. Um, on top of that, um, most businesses receive about four to five notices once per month and most of them get into compliance. There are some businesses that don't respond to our letters in one way or another who need to be followed up with and that's usually when we talk about other types of, you know, enforcement procedures. So we either wanna, um, potentially get in touch with Melinda's office and maybe discuss what those enforcement procedures would look like, or maybe we would want to, um, again, threaten these types of penalties or threaten, make, make a more threatening letter, whatever the case may be, but just talk about specifically what the county would be interested in pursuing.
Does the tax, I'm gonna, I'm trying, I'm not gonna waste everyone's time too much here with all my questions, but is the tax gonna, does it go up over time?
I don't believe there's a built-in CPI.
Okay, we need to have something. I mean, twenty years from now, that tax, it's already very low. I mean, I don't frankly understand why people don't pay it because it's, it's nominal. Um, and, um, so yeah, I think that's something also to add to the list of what do we need to do to increase that. I'll be upfront, I was against this tax, uh, for the simple reason that I didn't agree with the, uh, tactic that the county used back in twenty eighteen um, because the, the tax only applies to unincorporated businesses and I did strongly, adamantly disagreed with going out, uh, overtly, going out and, and getting the, the city voters to, to vote on this. And, and I thought that that was, um, maybe not nefarious, but somewhere in between, uh, wrong and nefarious. I just, I just strongly disagreed with that, so I'm gonna be upfront there. So I, that's why I wanna make sure if we're gonna have this tax, we gotta have systems in place to make sure that there's a, a level playing field and that there's accountability and, um, and then on the mining part, just wanna make sure that, um, that we do a thorough analysis because that's where the chunk of the revenue comes from, as we all know.
Right.
Madam Chair. Supervisor Gonzalez.
If I may, um, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this line of questioning. It feels like, do we, do we know or do we suspect underreporting from the mining industry? Cause from my understanding, they're paying the lion's share of the taxes.
Correct, um, I would say that we do suspect that there is always some underreporting. Honestly, the way that business tax works because it's such a trusted tax, right? It's a tax that's basically self-reported, just like any other tax, just like, um, in, income tax and sales tax.
So the self-reporting is an issue, the way we have it set up is an issue.
I wouldn't say the way you have it set up, it's, that's the way it has to be set up, it's part of like state law, right? But it is, based on it being a self-reported tax, people have the ability to either, um, for real tax dodgy reasons to do it and also there's reasons that people make mistakes, they miss something or they don't do something. And when you have this important of a revenue source, regardless of its, um, of whether or not it's being misreported or if there is any suspicion of it, it's important to know that there is nothing wrong with it. So for an example, it's the same thing with TOT. We consistently on the HDL side recommend that you're consistently auditing any of the hotels to just make sure that there's consistent reporting being done there. It's just such an important revenue source and it's such an important thing to.
Yeah, I do have some concerns about the way we're, we're collecting the TOTs, yes.
Right, so in those cases specifically, because it's an important revenue source and because this can be so much money from just a small percentage of businesses and one of those businesses misreporting and being a bad actor can cause detrimental impact to your revenue.
Well, without, um, starting any kind of legal, um, action, what do we have in terms of teeth as a county? What, what can we do to, to enforce, um, compliance from, from these industries?
So I would say other than legal action, like other, other than like I said, the, the misdemeanor claim I made earlier, um, it's normally, it is penalties and interest, obviously the amounts go up, um, but normally legal action is the next step. Like if you choose to, if there's a balance, like let's say someone owes a, a sum of money and they choose not to pay, um, the next step at a certain point is to escalate it, um, if that's something the county wants to pursue, right? And I would say that in some cases it i, it is the right decision to do that, especially dependent on the amount of money that might be owed by a particular business.
And we are pulling through with the penalty and interest aspect.
Correct.
CAO Espinosa, did you go on?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, um, Melinda and I have had this conversation and, and, and HDL mentioned this, that, you know, the next step I think really we need to do is do an audit and verify, um, prior to anything further. Uh, we need to verify, um, through the auditing process. So we're working, uh, in, on that internally to, to actually move forward with that and then I think it'd be good to come back with a report to your board, um, after that's done to give an update of how things are.
Yeah, cause I would be reluctant to use the term fraudulent activity, but if that is out there and that is existing, then there has to be penalties and consequences to that behavior.
Yeah, but we need to first verify that and through the auditing process.
Correct.
CAO, uh, CAO, sorry, uh, Supervisor Satello, hi, I just gave you a new job title.
Thanks. Um, so I'm just curious, um, when Measure H was proposed, um, and passed by the voters, what was the expectation of, of monies to receive? I mean, I guess I look at it, now the mining has kind of always been there, right? I mean, we've kind of always collected this ten cents a ton. Um, so when we look at, you know, the revenue being three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I know that's not the amount, I'm just making an easy number. Um, the three hundred thousand is essentially coming from the mining. I mean, this is just such a small drop in the bucket that it, it's, it's kind of odd that we've looked at this as a, a revenue. So I'm just wondering if the expectation that it was, it was going to potentially bring in a lot more, but now after, um, implementing it for a few years, we're seeing that it's not really bringing in a whole lot of revenue.
Correct, um, so I had a conversation with, uh, Joe Paul on how we came up with an estimate to begin with. And basically in the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties maybe, um, before, when we had a business license, it was five cents per ton instead of the ten cents that we currently have. Um, and so the information that we received on the estimate, basically us, um, took what we were receiving at that point and kind of extrapolated it based upon building and the economy and tw- twenty, thirty, forty years later, and they came up with a number. And that number, as we've seen over a couple of years, has not really, um, that number was a little high. What was that number, do you remember?
It was, it's, um, six, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And basically the business license tax was historically collected for years, uh, before it was discontinued in nineteen ninety-six. So basically the extrapolation was from decades before and, um, and basically it shows here historically the business license tax prior was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So there's this kind of twofold here, it's one with the mining element, which is, um, the flat, the flat rate of a point or ten cents, uh, per ton plus the business license fee, so.
A hundred and seventy total with the business?
Just the business license.
Just the business, not including the mining operations.
Prior to nineteen ninety-six, excluding, so there would be.
So we were at a hundred and seventy thousand in the nineties and now we're at?
Four.
Under fifty thousand?
Well, the, the, um, business, uh, license tax is eighty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for twenty twenty-three, just a, just a business license.
But I mean, we're a hundred thousand short of twenty years ago, yet our community has grown.
Hence auditing on the mining element, cause that's where the bread and butter's at basically, that's where the, the significant.
I know, but we're talking, I mean, those are separate, right?
Yeah.
We're talking just, if I'm looking at just the business license fee, take out the mining operation, part of it.
You're right.
Just the business license fee, we're less than half what we were over twenty years ago.
And I, and I think it would be good to probably understand what the business count was back then and what the dollar figure was collected back then as well, cause that can have an impact on what that total number was.
Yeah.
Cause it could have been more at that point, or, and/or there was more businesses.
It just seems like we're spending a lot of time and effort, um, thank goodness for HDL, right? Because there's so much time and effort that's going into this for very little coming back to us. I mean, with seventy thousand dollars, we're not really able to fund more in law enforcement or fire protection. It doesn't even fund a position. Um, so I, I don't know, I am, I kinda struggle with this. Um, so, I mean, what do other, what are other counties doing? I know since you're the experts, um, you know, what are they doing to be successful? And how do their rates compare to ours? And I know that's comparing apples and oranges, right? But just to give us a, a ballpark, like are we just way under our, our numbers based on kind of population, very low? Is it the way that, um, that we're just doing unincorporated?
Yeah, I mean, so there's multiple factors to that, to that question and, um, my full honest professional opinion is gonna be that, um, having an employee-based tax, that's obviously very, that is obviously very business-centric and business-friendly and there's a lot of pros and cons that come along with that. Um, but it does make it so that when you don't have like, for an example, a gross receipts tax, which a lot of other counties and local cities have when it comes to business license tax, you have a lot more bang for your buck and also a lot more equity within the city and, and/or county, whatever like jurisdiction is charging this local business tax. Um, because the reality of the situation is, especially with modern times, um, you could have ten employees or five employees or three employees and be making multi-millions of dollars. You could have a hundred employees and have half that amount. Um, so the way the tax is currently set up is in a way regressive towards what the current like economic state of the, just, I would say the country is at the moment, let alone your particular county. Um, the secondary aspect of this is that because of agriculture being a very big part of this area and then being exempt, any space that is in your unincorporated area that's taken up by ag is basically a net zero return on your business license tax. Um, and then obviously these mining operations also take up a decent amount of space when, in their areas respectively. So you have like these multiple different factors that are kind of impacting the general business license tax, like for that particular part of it. The general business license tax has no way to grow besides from more enforcement and more notification and/or a change in the way the tax is being enforced. Um, and again, based on it being an employee-based tax and not something like a gross receipts tax or something that is a little bit more, you get, I would say you get a little bit more impact from because you can have these kind of big swings where maybe you have one big business that has, you know, a high gross receipts volume and therefore they have a higher tax amount. Doesn't matter if someone has a really good year, if they still only have fifty employees, they're still only gonna pay two hundred dollars in local business tax. So that's kind of the negative impact that you're seeing, I would say, from a, just a, I, just from my personal analysis, most jurisdictions right now, regardless of county or city, just from a business license tax perspective, are moving towards gross receipts. Um, it is, I would, the hot trend right now, um, there's a new proposition going into the ballot for twenty twenty-four, potentially changing the way that certain, um, taxes can be raised. It's moving all of the general fund stuff to two-thirds, I'm, I'm sure everyone's heard about it. Um, so based on that and based on that, like information, a lot of cities are moving right now to a gross receipts tax to try, to try to rush in before that ballot gets passed. So anyway, that's my professional opinion, we have those kinds of things that are basically working against us and we're trying to get as many people, which that's part of why the compliance program's been active for so long is cause we're, we're trying to ensure in the best way possible that the most businesses are paying and so that you at least have that as much of a baseline as you possibly can.
Okay, so do you know, um, Okay, so do you know, if we were to look at a gross receipts kind of model, is that something that we would then need to take that to the voters?
Would, yeah.
We would?
Because it would more than likely increase the tax, and any increase in the tax would require a voter.
Okay, do you know, what is the City of Hollister, like what is their business license? How do we compare to the City of Hollister's business license tax and the way that they're kind of, do they do it based on per employee or are they by gross receipt?
That I'm not positive. I did speak to the City of Hollister, and they have roughly sixteen hundred businesses. It's the same thing where, so they do it a couple of different ways. So you could just go to register, you go into their portal to register your business. And then they also have code enforcement that goes around and, oh hey, I think there's a new business, I wonder if they have a business license? And so they go back and check the database to see if they're, if that business is registered. And if not, they receive a warning and then they receive a ticket and fines happen just like ours. I think theirs was like, progressively increased like forty percent to sixty percent if you, once you comply. Their business license, the highest is I think a hundred and nineteen dollars.
So very comparable to ours.
And then, like, I'm sorry, a professional, and then their retail is like sixty-five dollars.
Okay.
I don't know if it includes a number of employees that they have. And I believe that their revenue was around a hundred and seventy to two hundred thousand dollars on those sixteen hundred.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
And I was gonna mention, if I can, just for clarity purposes, there was classification, there was five classes, retail, wholesale, which is a flat rate, plus the employee, which is a hundred and eighteen dollars, plus two dollars and sixty-five cents per employee, services, property, rental, entertainment, flat rate plus employee, which is a hundred and eighteen dollars, eighty cents, plus five point, five dollars and twenty-two cents per employee. Professionals, a hundred and eighteen dollars plus employee, which is seven dollars and eighty cents. Vendors, thirty dollars plus sixty cents, sixty-six cents per employee. And then the mining, which was the flat rate of a hundred and eighteen plus ten cents per ton. So just wanted to put that in perspective, there was some different categories. And I believe the board wanted to not have a huge number and a big burden on the, on the different businesses, so they kind of.
You know, it makes sense that we're similar to what they are, so I'm kind of happy to hear that.
And a real quick comment, I have the Hollister information for you. It's also based upon employees going in tier levels, so instead of by employee per charge that you just went through, it's, if you have this many employees, the per employee would be charged a certain rate. And as the numbers climb in employee count, the number reduces towards per employee count. And the penalties in Hollister are going to be triple what yours would be. So instead of the twenty percent, they're seeing a fifteen percent increment all the way up through sixty-five percent, calculated one month, one month over time, calculating per. And also going to what Ian was saying, as we look at what the norm is out there, there, the penalty rate is a little under what we normally see, right? We usually see upwards of fifty percent and/or a hundred percent, calculating over six to five months from what we normally see. And I also want to make a comment to what you were saying of the eighty percent compliance rate, and also what you were saying what was, I think almost twenty years ago, compared to today. I would love to get all the data that you guys have, so we can run a full report for you guys and get that produced over to you, what was versus what is, I know we want to separate kind of the golden goose of what mining is for you guys here, so I can do a comparative analysis of what all of our normal taxes are compared to what the mining was and is now, and we can get that over to you guys. But the compliance rate, as we look at what, what our, our general figure of eighty percent is, I'm not from around here, I'm not gonna lie, but I drove here and there's a lot of construction, a lot, on the road, should have thought. With that, you have a lot of contractors in and out of your county. They are your biggest up and your biggest down through your business licensing. So as we look at, so as we look at what eighty percent compliance looks like from your established rate of the number of licenses you have, they will always fluctuate. That's going to be a big, so of the twenty percent that doesn't renew year in and year out, again, this is going to be a general number for you, so not specific, I'm sorry, but it's probably almost fifteen percent of all of that is going to be the contractors, right? They come in, they do their job, and they're out. They come in, they do their job, and then they're out. Whether they stay for a long period of time or not, we hope, but that's not always the case.
Are we making sure that we're capturing those contractors that are coming in, doing the work, and then leaving? I mean, is there a way for us to ensure that, that they are paying and that they are getting their business license fee here?
As confidently as we can. In that, and what Ian has done and will continue to do, right? When we get a general contractor coming in, we can ask them, hey, provide me a subcontractor list, please. And that's, just as taxes are taking in, it's a self-report. If they come in and they, and I'm saying this, and I don't believe this to be the case, in some sort of nefarious way, they want to say, I don't have any. Well, then we don't have the information to be able to get and contact them to make sure that they're licensed. Again, I don't think that's happening, it's not often that ever happens. If we ask for a list, they provide us the list, we run that list through our database to ensure that those people that they gave us are already licensed. And if not, then again, Ian's team reaches out to them to ensure that they are going through the process, or we inform them, hey, it looks like you forgot to do this, we're here for you, let's get you licensed, type of scenario.
And so you have a development, how, how are you getting in contact with that main contractor? Or is it that when they're submitting their permits through planning a building, then you're connected and then you go from there? Is that how that would work?
That's exactly how it works, and I'm not going to go into like the granular details, but when they go to the permitting counter, they have access into our system, it's all live data. They, they look up the contractor state license number, if it doesn't pull as in the system or active and current, there's very specific data points in there that they can, they can look at. And if it doesn't say it's active and current, they'll say, hey, here's a phone number, call them.
Okay.
And in that phone call, five minutes with us, and then they're, they're up to date, they're paid, they're good to go, and that'll be reflective in the system for, for the employees here.
Okay, great.
Can I add one comment to that, if I may? Abraham just texted me, thanks Abraham. He, he basically said that prior to issuing a building permit, they require that they get a license as well, so just, just a heads up on that side of it.
Okay, okay, so I just have two more questions. Melinda, there was a comment made earlier that we have all of the mining companies are registered and are paying their business license fee, is that correct?
Yes. Some of them are very small.
Okay.
But I, yes, in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, I worked with R M A, Ariel in particular, and got information on all the mining companies in the county, and I sent them all certified letters. And I believe that they all responded to, to both myself and to H D L.
Okay.
But some of them are very small.
Well, that's okay, I just.
And they, they did pay.
Somebody had made some comments to me that certain people weren't, and I was just curious, and then, so just thought I'd ask. Lastly, is H D L's rate based on a percentage that we're bringing in? Or a flat rate based on the amount of work? I mean, it sounds like we're kind of asking, hey, we go back and look at some of this data and these audits and different things, you know, how would that work? Because we're not bringing in a lot of money with this.
You, you went right where I was going, how much do you make out of this and how do you make?
My salary is, so, a couple of different things, right? So there's different services that we provide, obviously, and in those different services, there's different price structures for those different services. So for any of the normal day-to-day processing, it's just a flat fee of like, I think, I think it's six, oh yeah, it's fif, it's fifteen dollars, sorry. So it's fifteen dollars per processed account, just very quick and easy. Anytime, like for an example, those new, the new contractors that Matt was talking about, anytime that process is happening, that's all happening on a fifteen dollar per account basis, anytime a new business comes in, anytime one of those things comes in. The identification process, on the other hand, so things that are like the discovery process of finding new businesses and finding businesses out of compliance, that one is a contingency-based process, that's contingency on the amounts that we collect, but there's no go-forward revenue. It's just the one-time cost, and that's thirty-five percent of whatever we find.
So there is incentive for you to find?
Correct.
The businesses?
I take that incentive in stride, yeah.
Okay, now what about when we're asking for kind of this audit and kind of more information and data? Is that going to cost us more, or is that part of the package that we're already paying for?
So it's part of the package and it's part of the, it's part of the discovery and audit feature, right? So you don't actually pay anything upfront, and there's no like minimum cost, there's no any like weird fees or anything associated with it. So if all the businesses are reporting the exact amount, okay, zero. If we find something, if we find a dollar, we get thirty-five cents of that dollar, basically.
Okay, thank you so much.
And you're asking more for like what I was talking about earlier, is the data analysis by my side, right?
Yes.
That goes with our service.
Okay, thank you very much.
And please speak into the microphone so Zoom land can hear us.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I was mentioning the data analysis that you was mentioning earlier, that comes free of service with us on board.
Thank you, Supervisor Dangor.
Yeah, just really quickly, the Class E, that's, that's the mining, right?
Correct.
The per-ton fee of ten cents, when, how long has it been ten cents per ton, where's that number come from?
It's been since twenty eighteen, right? I think because it was passed along with that measure, so twenty eighteen is when the original ballot measure got implemented and then passed, and then twenty nineteen was when it was actually enforced with the.
Yeah, so is it just, if, as it is right now, will that just stay ten cents indefinitely?
Can I just say that we do it based upon the C P I? And I think the C P I was two point four percent or whatever, so it really didn't add even a cent so far. It hasn't really calculated to show even a cent more in the C P Is that we've had.
Okay.
But we do adjust the rates for everybody else, calculates out a little bit more of it.
So that does get adjusted?
Yeah.
It just hasn't moved enough to, to show a change? Okay, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, I was gonna mention to you, yeah, it, it, what was just said in two thousand eighteen and in two thousand nineteen. And actually, the, the auditor's fiscal report, surface mining operations are not assessed a rate per employee, but rather have a ten cent per ton minerals depleted and sold indexed by a caller, so. But it's so small, so signi, it's not significant, but as the number grows, it does, it does, it does grow.
Yeah, and is that, it just seems a little odd, so the only way that changes is the C P I? I mean, because there's, there's a degree of depletion of mineral as well, right? So I mean, they, their mining, we're giving our like, our minerals, our land to somewhere else, so. I don't know, I would think that that would change over time, rather than just stay at, I mean, five, so what is it, six years it's been ten cents, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so that just changes C P I, is there, is there, if theoretically, is there, could that be changed in another way? Could that be, I guess, calculated differently, or is it have to stick with this?
So it could only, it's.
Have to go back to the voters.
Thank you.
So it could be, it could be changed as long as you go back to the voters. So there's no direct way that you can change it, there's no like, oh, like tomorrow, we can just be like, oh, it's twelve cents now. I mean, we'll have to go back to the voters because any raise in the tax, it's a California state proposition that was passed back in nineteen ninety-four, I believe, for Proposition Two eighteen.
And just remembering how much the cost of election and a measure can be, that sometimes doesn't pencil out. I know Supervisor Cosmiki, but, but, but I'll let you, I'd like you to wrap it, but let me make a couple of real quick comments. You guys all hit on a lot of my spots, so I appreciate all of the questions and comments because I had the same questions and comments. How many mining companies do we have? I, I know we have more than one. And some of them are very small, but the concern I have, I totally support doing the audit. The big concern I have is also the impact on our roads and the weight of the trucks. It's not just getting the money, it's ensuring that the weight of the trucks are at the legal weight that our roads can handle. Being someone that is in the rural area and sees the trucks driving on all of our rural roads, it's an area of concern, so I would want that to be included in the conversation of the audit. Is that something that your company does?
It's not something that we do. I can look into something, if it's something that we can technically collect as part of this process. The only thing that's somewhat complicated about things of that nature is whenever you're asking, whenever you're doing an audit on any type of tax, and you're asking for things that are not necessarily directly relevant to that tax, because technically, the only thing that's relevant to that particular tax reporting is the tonnage that they're depleting, right?
Right.
Now, I intelligently might be able to sneak around that and say, well, part of your export and import structure, like so if I can see that you're exporting a certain number of goods on your trucks, and that can be part of the audit process potentially. But we'd have to look into like how we can maybe move around that and potentially get that information if we can.
You kind of went right where I was, I was kind of going, is if you only have one hundred trucks that have hauled, and your trucks can only hold X amount of material, and you're paying this amount, then your truck should be underweight.
Correct.
And we are seeing, and yeah, I, I think there's a way around how that could be tied together with the audit.
And at the, at the, I would say at the minimum, what we could do is that we could obtain that information and then potentially share that information with whoever we need to share it with, to then investigate it further for whatever needs to be investigated, right? So maybe not specifically being handled through the business tax program, right? But something that can be, it's like, hey, this looks like someone that has suspicious weight problems with their trucks, right?
Yeah, and, and my other, I'm going to take a little different approach from the enforcement discussion that was happening, is also, one of the reasons, you know, we, we have this tax is to bring in revenue, but we also want to promote economic development and economic vitality in our community, not necessarily construction, but we want our businesses to thrive. And I think one of the approaches we need to take is a more interactive and relationship with our local unincorporated businesses. Coming up with a master list of our unincorporated businesses, highlighting our unincorporated businesses, celebrating their successes, showing how we can be a partner, not a hammer, that we just want money. We want you to be successful, so how can we do that? So tying that into economic advisory or whatever, E B C, where the future of E B C may be going, you know, and maybe something within our community. So I kind of think it's a, it's a two-pendulum type thing, where you're looking at, how do we support you so that you are upfront with us about what you're doing and we can celebrate with you? And the little hundred and twenty, two hundred dollars is going to start trickling in because we're, we're a business-friendly, not necessarily a development-friendly, but we're a business-friendly community. My last item before I go to Supervisor Cosmiki is, and thank you for asking about how do you make your money? Because if, if we're paying you a flat rate and we're paying you more than what we're bringing in, that would just be a no-go for me. I do like where you went with the subcontractors list, and that ties in with departments have data, and they, every department collects data differently. And if we start looking at data collection as a whole in our community and in our county, here we go, G I S, if you start bringing that data into a single source, you will be able to start to highlight and measure and document and show history. So those are my only comments, because it's all about collaboration, not just with us and the businesses, but with us as departments and where, you know, you've got your fictitious business names that we did collaborate in the beginning of this from the Recorder's Office or County Clerk's Office. You know, all these different things, I think departments, because they're all here and so intrigued in this topic, we need to remember, if you have data that you're collecting, especially when it comes to pulling permits, you know, for a commercial business and tying that data, having it streamlined through, I think that would be another great way. Supervisor Cosmiki, wrap it up for us.
I'll try not to belabor, I'll try to bring it home.
Great.
So first, I just want to make it clear that I never said any of our miners are doing anything nefarious. I think it's my number-one job to examine these sorts of things, to ask blunt, difficult questions, to get direct, reliable answers, and that's what I'm in. I did hear five cents in the eighties and nineties on the ton, tonnage.
I believe, I believe that.
And inflation since the eighties and nineties is a lot more than ten, getting to ten cents. So it seems pretty obvious to me that, I know what a can of soda costs, I know I got some metal yellow for twenty-five cents back in the day. It seems to me the mining fee should be a lot higher than ten cents, first of all, and we need to examine that. That's one recommendation that I have out of this. The only reason I broached enforcement, I don't want to come hard on any businesses, to be really honest, I just think the whole, I think the whole, I think this whole system is kind of a mess, and I don't think it's fair. I just don't think the whole system is fair, and I don't. And I don't think the people that are paying the tax should be paying the tax because it's just not fair. I also will say, and I'm contributing to this, I think we spent about eighty-six thousand dollars here just right now in the last hour with all these department heads in the room and you and all of us. So, and I absolutely do not support going to a gross receipts tax. I think that right now in the economy we're in, that would be an anti-business move on our part. I'm not gonna support that. What I do support is suspending the business tax. And whatever it takes for us to suspend the tax for non-mining entities only as a way for us to show that we are pro-business and also to acknowledge that this system that needs to be reexamined. And potentially come back to the voters if there's a will down the line to look at a system that is cleaner than what we have now. I just don't think the eighty-six thousand dollars in revenue is anywhere near the trouble that we're going through with this. And I also think we could send a message to the business community and future businesses that we are pro-business and we're welcoming to businesses and we don't need to have a business tax here. So please come and do business in our community. I think increasing the tax is akin to increasing the sales tax. The businesses are gonna suffer even if it's a small amount and they're gonna pass those taxes on to the consumers. So that's all. So my two recommendations, examine the ten cent fee for the mining. And if there's a will to, even if it's, you know, sending it back to a committee to have a discussion or to have a future discussion here at the board about just looking into suspending the business tax. I know you guys aren't crazy about that, but suspending the business tax for non-mining entities, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions Supervisor Sotella? Cause I, I do have a couple of comments.
So while I, I really understand and appreciate where Supervisor Cosmiki is coming from, I'm concerned that we're struggling with revenue as it is. And I know that this is a drop in the bucket, but to cut more revenue, I mean, I struggle with that cause at some point we're, we're gonna be underwater. And so I know this isn't very much and, and maybe the benefit outweighs the fifty thousand or seventy thousand that's coming in. But I, I don't, I, I don't know that I can support that at this time. Possibly going and, and having a, taking it to a committee or something for further evaluation. But to vote on that today, I don't. Okay, cause I don't know that I can go with that today. Okay. Yeah.
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm gonna make somewhat of the same comment. I like the idea of showing that we're business friendly, but one of the concerns I have is once you stop something, starting it up again is a whole nother process. And my concern is we're going to lose out on the data. And the data is the most important part of where our community's going. And being able to audit and see the business growth and where it's coming from and the industries in our community. I think even though this is, this process may seem like it, it doesn't bring in much, where we can take that data and what we can do with it could be invaluable. But I have no problem starting a conversation. And Supervisor Cosmiki, since we are on the finance ad hoc, what do you think? No decisions, just doing some research and, yeah, what do you think?
Mike.
Mike, your mic.
Sorry, I would certainly be okay with that.
I was gonna suggest that, so, thank you.
Are you guys good with that? Okay, so we'll do some research and start working more closely with you guys and maybe pull in the auditor's office for some comments of, you know, historical data with, with revenue stuff. So thank you so much for your presentation. Any other ending comments here?
I, I was just gonna say, one of the key elements to why the board wanted to move forward with a business license tax, because it did go away, was for safety reasons. There were some issues with the type of businesses that were being ran out in the unincorporated area that were kind of next to schools and other things. So they really wanted to understand what was going on in our community. So that was one of the big reasons.
Another great, another great talking point and conversation. Also wanna make sure that we encapsulate or include from our last meeting, I think we've had so many meetings lately, the conversation about home-based businesses and how we tie this into home-based businesses to be able to promote them even, cause now I see how home-based businesses can actually turn into brick and mortar businesses based on their success. So thank you so much and thank you, Melinda and Matt and Aaron, right?
Ian.
Ian, okay. Thank you so much, guys. Turned off my mic. So are you gonna introduce the next one? It's one point, one B, which is now about sales tax, I believe.
Yeah, and just as, as mentioned earlier, your board did request looking at different options of revenue. And so this is one of those options. So Dulce, it kind of went back to some of our old agendas that we had and worked with HDL on some projections and she has that for you today with sales tax. Dulce?
Good morning. So our computer's gonna reboot in fifteen minutes, so I will run through this presentation. Maybe we can take a short break afterwards if needed or if we're talking just.
I, I like the idea of running through it real quick.
Will do. So, good morning. I'm Dulce Alonso, Principal Administrative Analyst in the CEO's office. As you, as you may know, the statewide tax base is currently seven point two five percent. And of this seven point two five, one point two five goes back to the county. One percent as Bradley Burns and then point two five for county transportation. So if we look at our neighboring jurisdictions, we have, or if you, if you look at our cities within our, our county, City of Hollister currently charges nine point two five, San Juan Batista, nine percent. Sales taxes is allowed to be charged on any retail, retail sales. So this excludes any goods that businesses purchase for resale. And they're generally, it generally also excludes materials that go into products that they resell. Tangible, so tangible products refer to physical materials that people can touch. So products that are not tangible, such as services or digital goods, are not subject to, to this tax. Also, personal, personal property is movable from one place to another. And so that's subject to tax, but real property such as land that are actually physically attached to, to the, to the land are not subject to sales tax. So just wanna clarify that for the public. We did reach out to HD, HDL and they provided projections based on Measure G. So if we look at twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, what each jurisdiction received from Measure G, if the county's considering a one percent sales tax, they included an inflation rate, but we would be looking at approximately three point four million that the county would receive if we so, so choose to move forward with this sales tax. I just wanna cover quickly, really, some timelines that we have that are really short. If the board so chooses to move forward with the measure, we'd have to get something, a resolution and language for the measure approved fairly quickly. And we're looking at a deadline of August ninth to, to do that. However, our last meeting prior to that, because we have a July break, would be June eighteen. So we're looking, if, if we wanna get a measure on, we're looking to get something by June eighteenth, unless the board decides to do a special meeting for any, any type of measure. So we have very tight deadlines to, to get a measure together. And there's two, two types of taxes that the board can consider. They could consider a general tax that goes into local government for, for general fund. And this requires a simple majority, fifty percent plus one. Or we could look at a special tax that is levied for a specific purpose. And this requires a two-thirds super majority and, and these, at the, for approval, so. So what, what would the cost be? And it really depends on various factors, but the four factors that, that influence the cost is the date of the election. Are we putting it at a primary or a general election? The body of the measure, how much tax has to be included in, in print or posted? Also, the cost of materials. So we are experiencing an increase in, in material in general across the board. And the total content on the ballot will also influence the price. So I did pull some historical measures and what they actually cost the county. We have fourteen, we have ranging from thirteen thousand to fifty-three thousand. Fifty-three thousand was for Measure G, which is very, it, there was a lot to, to print with that measure. So that was a little on the, but there's that, it's kinda some timelines. I just wanna emphasize, we have a very short timeline if we do choose to move forward. And with that, I'll wrap it up. And, and today was just an informational presentation where we're seeking direction. If, if there's an interest to move forward or seek a transaction in use tax. And in the, an incorporated area, we could potentially charge one percent if the board so chooses. And if there's an interest to get it on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna open it up to public comment. Thank you, Dulce.
In chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press. I see no comment.
Okay, with no comments, bringing it back to the board, is there anybody that would like to talk? Cause I have no problem just saying in, in light of time, if there isn't a.
I'll make it brief.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, so I'm not in favor of us moving forward at this time. However, I think we're getting to a really critical point that we may have to make some really hard decisions and we may have to move forward in coming years. You know, we're just, we're being, you know what, we get eleven cents per dollar on our property tax. You know, and I think people always, our community compares us to, well, look what Monterey is doing. Look at Santa Cruz, Santa Clara, really hard to compare us with our neighboring counties. Really hard to stay competitive in the, you know, job market and being able to retain our employees. I look at future positions that are being requested today, a lot from law enforcement. How do we keep our communities safe? Right now, we're just not bringing in the revenue with potentially the closure of, of the dump and, and no longer having the landfill, that, that's revenue. So at what point, we're going to have to start looking at having revenue come in. Our roads are in terrible condition. How do we ensure that Measure G was great for a few years, but now that's going to be going to Highway twenty-five? That we need to find a solution for. I'm not advocating that it not, but we, we've gotta start figuring out some of these things. A lot of the deferred maintenance is costing us, it's, it's going to toss, cost us a ton of money in the future. And if we don't start to plan for the future here and, and start building a real solid foundation, I just don't think it's very wise. And so I think that it's a hard decision that we may have to look at for the future, not proposing it right now. I don't think this is a good year to be doing it. I think there's gonna be a lot that's on the ballot. I think it's just trying times with the economy, with inflation. I don't wanna do that to, to our residents, our community here right now. But I think it's something that we seriously need to start looking at. And, and we are, right? We're looking at all these different revenue sources. This is probably the yuckiest of all of them, raising taxes for our community. But I, you know, I, I don't know any other way around. I mean, we've got even our facilities here at the county. I mean, we're, we're spread all over this county. We've got a door that is, needs to be demolished. There's just a lot of work here. So I am in favor of potentially looking at this in the future, but I'm not in favor of it at this moment. So thank you.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I saw June eighteenth deadline on there and there was a brief mention of a special meeting. I just wanna make a statement that we need to stop taking the entire month of July off on this board. I understand the first meeting of the month to give everyone a break. It's basically a, a two-month break. And I've heard complaints from the public and I agree with those complaints. I never personally wanna see that again. And I think we should have a special meeting in July and get some work done. That said, we went through this process of getting the public input two to three years ago and the public was loud and clearly against it. I will say, we're not like Gilroy or Salinas, Monterey, some of these places that, that have higher sales taxes. Name almost any other neighboring city or county where a large chunk of the revenue that they're getting from that sales tax is coming from outside consumers. Almost all the consumers who will be taxed and asked to forego, yet more of their limited discretionary income would be our residents and I would be strongly opposing putting this on the ballot or anytime in the near future. Thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
Well, we started this conversation a few years ago and the timing wasn't great then either. And I totally understand, but looking at the finances for the county, I can't help but think we need to do something. And thinking about it isn't gonna get the job done. We need to be proactive on it. And I, I would recommend we move forward with this tax, though it's gonna be negative to the, to the community in terms of taxpaying base. It's an equitable process where it's a sales tax. It'll put us up on par with, with the City of Hollister as well as the city, almost close to the City of San Juan. But we're, we're a one percent difference between the City of Hollister and the County of San Donido. And so, though I'm not looking to penalize the voters, I just think it's a, it's an equitable balance that we need to do. I mean, we have the community hampering and hollering about the road conditions and as we need to provide services. And we can't provide the services if we don't have the revenue to be able to do that. And eleven cents on the dollar is just not enough to provide all the services necessary in order for the county to be successful and to be able to do all what it legally needs to provide to the community. So I think the one percent sales tax is not a bad op. We've been thinking about it for a long time and I think it's time to act on it. But it sounds like I'm, I'm in the minority here.
Supervisor Zanger, do you have any comments? Okay, my comments are real brief. I don't support a, a sales tax at this time. And if, if this was some way, something that was moving forward, I think we have to be much more prepared because a fiscal analysis to be able to even pitch what a sales tax could do for our community with revenue would need to be done. And that takes, you need to plan at least sixty days to do that in, in, in most cases, especially when it's complicated like this. But also, without having our business data, we're not gonna really be able to know where our revenue sources could be coming from. The other thing is, is that I'm more concerned when it comes to sales tax that we're actually collecting our sales tax and getting it in our county. Because of the difference in the sales tax, I've brought this up, I'm gonna keep bringing it up. When you buy something online and you're charged a Hollister sales tax and it's at nine point two five and no one catches it, who's getting the money? So I really would recommend more of an audit that we're actually getting our tax versus taxing more and working with the State Department, the California State Department of Tax and Fees to be able to do that. I'm not sure how HDL works with sales tax. Are you guys part of that audit too? So am I staying on topic enough to be able to continue this? I'm, I'm, I'm talking sales tax, but not just a measure. Okay, I wanna make sure I'm not breaking any rules here. Can you comment on where and what you do with?
There's a separate division that deals with sales.
Oh, okay. Not you guys.
Not them. Joe Paul and I have the main communications with the other team. So it's a separate division within HDL.
Since we're bringing the business one, how about we just tack this one on?
I completely agree with the, the thought process there, just to ensure. I know we've brought up Amazon in the past and looking at Amazon, but that really comes to mind cause most, a lot of us, sorry, I shop on Amazon. A lot of us shop on Amazon, most people do, and other online outlets. And I wanna make sure that when nine five oh two three comes up, that it doesn't necessarily just go to Hollister or I'll, I will say, San Juan Batista, nine five oh four five, cause I'm nine five oh four five, but I don't live in San Juan Batista.
Okay, so Joe Paul would like to make a comment. Is that on? I don't think that's on.
Joe Paul Gonzalez, Artic Controler. We have a contract with HDL to monitor sales taxes, where it's being paid to ensure that, you know, that taxes are not being misreported to other counties. As they were quite successful at rerouting sales taxes that were being reported to the city and county of San Francisco that belonged to San Donido County when the PB two project was, you know, being constructed. And, you know, for us, it meant several million dollars. So they are, that's what they do. They, they, we have a contract with them to ensure that, that all the sales tax that belongs to us is being properly routed to us. And we have a meeting every quarter, which our budget officer and also the principal analyst for the county. And we have a meeting every quarter, um, which, uh, our, uh, budget officer and also the principal analyst for the county sit in on that, um, and assistant art controller sit in on that meeting. Uh, and we, uh, discuss the, uh, the, the sales taxes, um, really by business that, um, that reports sales taxes. And, um, you know, I, I, I think as far as, you know, the sales tax is a state tax, uh, the state wants to make sure they get their cut. That's, you know, and, um, as far as, um, the reporting of the sales tax, uh, the Department of Tax and Fee Administration, they, um, they generally get it right, but when it, when they're misreported by taxpayers, HDL makes sure that, that the county gets our share. Many counties have, uh, and, and cities have agreements with HDL for that purpose.
I appreciate the comments and I really would like to maybe we could piggyback the ad hoc, the finance ad hoc with one of your quarterly meetings.
Yes, uh, I was gonna suggest that right now that, uh,
That would be great.
Next quarterly meeting, I'll, uh, coordinate with the, uh, committee so that we can actually sit in on that, uh.
That would be great because in just, I mean, where I see it the most is with car sales especially. Sorry. I, I only experience this because of, you know, my husband is a kind of a car collector and, uh, when you're buying a car, uh, and you're charged a Hollister sales tax, you're gonna notice it and you fight for that. So when that's happening to people, um, uh, with Amazon purchases or purchases online and it's minimal, but it adds up. As Ramon says, every penny counts, so we have to keep counting our pennies. So making sure that we have a process and understand it and it may just be some education on my part with the meeting. Um, but I want to ensure that, um, our residents, one, are not paying taxes they shouldn't. And two, if they are paying that higher tax, where's the money going? Where's that extra money going? Who's getting that? Cause it's not going back to the, the purchaser. I can guarantee that.
Yeah, I think, I think the, uh, the board committee would benefit greatly from sitting in on those, um, uh, they're about an hour long, uh, presentations by HDL. Um, very comprehensive. So, yeah, I.
Okay, great. We'll add that on our list.
Yes. I'm just curious, what about, um, you know, whether it's Santana Ranch and their building? Do we collect all of the sales tax for the building materials on any of these types of construction jobs? You know, we've got San Juan Oaks that'll be, um, that's starting very soon. We've got some big developments that are happening in the unincorporated area. Is there any way for us to collect the sales tax on all of the building materials? Cause I mean, I know probably a lot of the vendors or contractors are not San Benito County. Is there a way that we can get something?
Well, um, the, the, really the most secure way to ensure that that would happen is if in the development agreement, that's a condition. That, that's a condition that all purchases, uh, need to be accredited to the unincorporated county.
And I mean, I know, you know, we're not, there's really no projects coming before us right now and all of these ones that are currently building, um, were negotiated years ago. So for us to, to look at those development agreements would be a non-starter, I imagine, at this point.
Well, for sure, any future, if there are any, uh, development events, they, that would be a consideration if you want to incorporate in, in the negotiations.
I mean, I would love for the finance committee, for you guys to kind of take a look at some of these things and, and maybe it's a policy that we set at this level that any, any type of, um, future development agreements would have that kind of language in it that becomes a policy. We've got to start getting the benefit here for our county. Totally agree.
Completely support that and we do have projects coming. We have, um, hopefully this, uh, project near the airport coming, which could be extremely lucrative in the sun. So we should get this going as soon as possible.
Totally agree. Um, okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Joe Paul, for your comments. Thank you, staff. Um, we're gonna take right now just a real quick, uh, since it's, it's ten-thirty and it's rebooting. Can we take a, a, like a, we'll say three-minute break. Let's try and keep it within five. Yeah, five-minute break. Thank you, guys.